We've got a couple of minutes, but we'll try to get it straight up at seven thirty. For those of you who had a chance to attend the ribbon committee this morning for Bill Haka, remember we had an existing building that had been sitting kind of vacant for a significant period of time, Will Shelby, if you remember it right there on Jonesboro Road. And we were here to work with the private sector, they bought that property, they took it down, and they built a ground-up construction, Bill Haka. Bill Haka used to be right here in Jonesboro, for people who remember that, but it's been in Jonesboro, I can't think of where it was, it's been thirty-five years. So, when you see an opportunity where a business has kind of left town, if you will, and they decided to come back, that's something you're starting to make some progress in the right direction. One that you haven't seen yet is, you know, the Barnes &amp; Nobles, there's that building that was over there, you know, that sits to the rock, used to have a little basketball session in front of it, and that was operated by Foot Locker. Foot Locker basically closed that store and has been gone for, you know, a pretty significant amount of time, but Foot Locker is going to reopen that store in terms of that. So you'll get some redevelopment there, and then there was a Sears outlet that was in front of it, right down the hill to the left, and that's going to be an old iris. So, the vacancy is starting to be absorbed in a number of locations. I don't know enough about this particular restaurant, but across the street in Big Champs, Old Chapel Center there, on the left side, there's a new appliance, and that's going to be a place called Hangout, which is going to be a restaurant. So, looking forward to consistently moving, you know, the city in a direction where you will have greater opportunities to shop and ultimately experiences either or otherwise. Now being said, we'll start the council meeting for the April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, if you will stand for the pleasure of the rules, followed by all the statements. A pleasure, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the honor of Christianity, dominionation, underground, and individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Please be seated. I have before you the agenda, I have a motion to add an item at the end, which would be right after general comments, I don't know how long it will take, and it's basically to set the session, discuss legal matters, do I hear a motion?
So.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Much appreciated, seconded, all those who prepared to say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Quah?
Aye.
Ms. Van?
Aye.
Much appreciated. Approval of the minutes, approval of April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting minutes and the work session minutes, you have those before you, do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, probably seconded.
Mr. Mayor, are you open to the discussion?
Aye.
Okay. So, the meeting minutes or the main motion did not, doesn't record, doesn't reflect the substance of the motion, I'm going to give an example, like, so a main motion, the first main motion is that the motion was called verbal needs to hear, flow in language in the regular meeting minutes on March twenty-eighth, council chambers stated the restrooms were given to the council just the night before the meeting, the council were not given enough time to inform, to make the decision, and the meeting minutes came out having a main motion to say, council came on for the main motion to add verbal language into the meeting minutes. The substance of the motion, you know, could reflect in the minute, and there are several amendments happening that night, and all of them being recorded in the same, the same way, which doesn't allow public to have the transparency, that doesn't have the transparency for public and including the council member to have a good reference in what happened, and I have sent a note along with what we missed and when the motion happened to all the council members as well as the city clerk and city manager, and asking for, to have the city attorney to reveal the way, the description of the motion being recorded, to make sure that we follow the law in recording the motion, and also some of the information, some things happened during that hearing were not recorded in the meeting minutes as well. So, could I have an update if the city attorney had been revealed the way the main motion recorded?
Are you ready to make a motion, Ms. Van?
I'm asking a question. My question is that have, with my consideration to all the, to the city clerk, city manager, among all the councils, have the attorney reveal the way the main motion being recorded, have the city attorney help her look at that here?
Are you going to make a motion, Ms. Van?
Mr. Mayor, we are still in the discussing section, and I'm asking a question, my question is, the way the main motion is recorded in the draft doesn't reflect the description, the description of the motion doesn't reflect the substance of the main motion, and therefore the request to have the city attorney to review the recording of the motion, so have the city attorney reveal it, yes?
Any other comments? Are you going to make a motion, Ms. Van?
I am making a motion to have, to have the, to re, to record the meeting minutes for the work session and the regular session on March twenty-eighth, to have all the main motions reflect the description of the main motion.
Do your second. Here, main motion finished, go back to the original motion, do you have any other motions, Ms. Van?
I have the second main motion to have the meeting minutes for the meeting on March twenty-eighth to reflect what happened in the meeting minutes.
Do your second. Motion finished, go back to the original motion, do you have other motions, Ms. Van?
That's all, thank you.
All the papers say aye, Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Quah?
Aye.
Ms. Van?
May the main motion not record with the description that reflects the substance of the main motion, and the common of the council after the Nobles not reflected in the meeting minutes.
Amen. Presentations, Georgia City Week Coloring Contest presented by Seaford.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents. I have to say, of many duties that I live here at City Hall, this was one of my favorite ones, and it was very fun to observe all the submissions that were done, so at this time, I'm going to introduce, if you guys aren't here, we had a coloring contest in order to celebrate the Georgia City Weeks, sponsored by the Georgia Municipal Association, this year's theme of the way. So in the first slide, you see the original picture that GMA sponsored, which is, as I said, a Georgia City Weeks light away, and again, to repeat that, rules of the contest, in celebration of the twenty-two, the Georgia City Weeks, which is April twenty-third to the twenty-ninth, sponsored by the Georgia Municipal Association, the City of Moro started its celebration by opening its coloring contest each June twenty-twelve. The contest is free to enter, and the first place winner receives a City of Moro pair certificate of achievement and recognition with official picture adoption by the mayor, city council, and picked out a particular day every week. To enter, simply write the color you see below, make your best cover, participants must use the coloring page provided, but may color it whatever, using whatever material they wish to use, and they have to dig outside the box, and they were to write their first and last name, their age, grade, and school. They took the phone number in the back, and they submitted it electronically over here at City Hall. I do also want to say that this contest will not just open to residents of Moro, as many of you know, only B.C. Haney and Moro Elementary are inside the limits of Moro, and while speaking to the principals, not every student lives in the City of Moro, so we're not limited to just Moro residents. In the second slide, you see the breakdown, in overall, we had a fifty-two total number of submissions, and I'm working on my school, B.C. Haney had a total of forty-three submissions, Moro Elementary had a total submission of two, K-Pace School of Arts has a mission of one, Thomas Elementary School had a submission of six. And here, in this slide, we present the judges, I went with five judges, and I wanted to remain impartial and fair as we could, those choices have to use a paper piece. The first judge was Allen, he is a professor of arts from the Department of Visual and Performing Arts at Clayton State University, I would like to thank him later on in the future, Mr. Allen actually decided to come on a Sunday, we were working, since the contest goes out Friday, we were working all weekend, me and the judges, to make this selection fair. Ms. Essie, of course, if you guys know her, some of you, she's a former insurer of the City of Moro, Marquita Lee, she serves as the events supervisor of the City of Moro, and Bon Trent, he serves the IT, he's a city of Moro. I just had, picked one citizen, and this is Ms. Lana LaVey, as you can see, many of us consider her the Simpson liaison, and she is a member of one of our boards at URA, and I think we all know how much she loves the City of Moro, so whenever her make appear, you see the picture there, it's Alex between Ms. Essie and Ms. Marquita, Ms. Marquita and Ms. Lana and Bon. In the next slide, you see the process that the judges went through, like I said, some of them were here over the weekend with me, had some different methods of elimination, possible elimination, Bon, Marquita, and Essie used possible elimination by eliminating the least picture, and then went on going on to that, as you can see, Mr. Allen made her picture, he was thoroughly looking at it, and selecting his first, second, and third place, Ms. Lana as well, and I did separate the judges in whether we're giving the picture, and seeing Lana has, she didn't go to last, but she has a picture, I've never seen an examination, an examination of a picture more than Ms. Lana. In this slide, you see the results, I labeled each picture by the number, by the total, by the school that was submitted, and the total number that was submitted, so they were labeled one through two, one through whatever number it was, so I did ask the judges to submit our recommendation for our first, second place, and third, and third place winner by the number. Ms. Essie submitted fountain drawing number two as first place, recommended, I'm sorry, she recommended B.C. Haney drawing number twenty-two as for third place, Moro Elementary drawing number one as for second place, Bon Trent made a recommendation for drawing number two of fountain for first place, drawing number six of fountain for second place, K-Pace, and so on, so this time, I want to say the first place winner was fountain drawing number two, that unanimously got five votes out of all the judges, and you see that on the far right in the bottom. Second place winner, it was split there by the multiple that received was fountain drawing number six, for three votes, it totaled three votes. The third place winner, it was also split, and we had B.C. Haney drawing number twenty-two for one vote, K-Pace drawing number one for two votes, B.C. Haney, number forty for one vote, and B.C. Haney drawing number forty for one vote, so K-Pace having majority of the votes in that selection, who was selected as the third place winner. So the first place winner I'd like to announce is Dequan Mays, fourth grade, age ten, Fountain Elementary School, and his first picture is, from, starting from left to right, that's Mr. Mays' picture. The second place winner, who would not be, he would attend today, as the teacher informed me that she was, her parents have a personal matter, will get her recognized properly, but it's Evelyn Vigeratrope from fourth grade, Fountain Elementary School, and that's the second picture. And the third place winner is Kaylin Dorji from K-Pace School of Arts, third year, she is local, I love her. Here are other examples, this is the conclusion of my presentation, but as you can see by the picture there, there are other submissions that were also submitted by the students, and once again, it was very fun, and very, for me to watch the creativity of these kids and the outside thinking outside the box, it was very, very, so this time, Mr. Dequan Mays, may you please come up?
You can have your family come up here, too.
Before we present him with his award and his certificate of recognition, the mayor is going to read this note coming from the mayor's office.
Good Mr. Mayor, congratulations on being selected first place winner of the City of Moro two thousand twenty-three Coloring Contest. The Georgia Municipal Association is sponsoring Georgia City Week from April twenty-third to the twenty-ninth to showcase and celebrate cities and the many services they provide. I wish to express my sincere gratitude for your participation in the Georgia City Week Coloring Contest, we had a total of fifty-two submissions from various elementary schools, we were very impressed with all the submissions, selecting a first, second, and third place winner was a difficult decision, but your amazing and creative work fascinated our community. It is my hope that you had fun and enjoyable process during this contest, and will cherish this experience for many years to come. You're a talented, bright, and distinguished student.
And the mayor is going to present with an award, a gift.
And trust me, we take a lot of pictures here, so we'll have you stand up, the council will come down, we'll, we'll treat you well. What you really want is the Dairy Queen certificate. That's not bad, that's not bad, that's not bad.
So, Mr. Mays did win a fifty-dollar gift card to Dairy Queen, a fifty-dollar gift Now, once again, as our second place winner couldn't be here and would be ever properly recognized, in and out of the next council meeting, we will make sure that I attend her school, and we give her or her parents the recognition and her plate number, but I would like to say that, I'm sorry, Ms. Lana LaVey and Ms., Ms. Bobby donated also a fifty-dollar gift card for one of our place winners. And this comes for our third place winner, Kaylin, may I come up, please? And she did, she's receiving the gift card that Ms. Lana LaVey, Ms. Bobby generously
Kaylin Duray for being named third place winner of the City of Moro Coloring Contest two thousand twenty-three in celebration of Georgia City's work, that the mayor and city council of the City of Moro hereby recognize you, congratulations.
What I'd like to do is, is the judges to come up, and then the families that want to come up as well, city council, you're welcome to stand out here as well, there's a lot of photographs and a lot of pictures that are going to mean something to the students themselves, and we want them, they put in a lot of effort to make this work, so the floor is yours, and when you're done, you can coordinate for, so that everybody will stand up and take the picture.
Mr. Mays, with the first place winner, come up, Dequan. Yeah, and Ms.
Just come on up, we're, all the shy people are in Jonesboro. And, audience as well, I mean, we have no problems with that, it's a City of Moro award, you know, the fitting that the city presents it. Come on, come on, don't feel shy. Don't be shy, we'll put all the tall people in the back. Got it, we good? Parents, we good? I'm tall, you can cut me out of that.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I do apologize, I'm about to present our pictures, and again, the mayor and council is going to, Mr. Dequan's picture is going to be adopted today in the, in the council meeting as the official picture, we will hang it up in the lobby for a man. This is Mr. Dequan's picture, he's our first place winner. This is our second place winner. And then our third place winner.
I think we found the talent, it's on the media.
Now I'm going to present the Moro Community Cleanup Day that we had on Saturday for
Good evening, everybody, my name is John Bouchard, I am the president of Moro Neighborhood Watch, forgive me, I would have worn my shirt, I'm going out of town for work, and Dorothy asked me to present, I didn't bring my glasses, so if I mess up, you'll forgive me, we'd like to have, please guide me if I do forget anything, Victor and Dorothy, we'd like to recognize the winners of the community cleanup, I'm not aware if there were any other entries aside from the winner. Right, that's a deal.
That's a deal, just read the first one.
Like I said, I forgot my glasses, so, see, I told you.
There was, we had a community cleanup, and we had a fifty-nine hundred Rose Road, that is an old church over there behind Walmart, we did pass out flyers, we were going to have a first, second place winner, however, to a community that came together and had more than two individuals that participated, we also added a third place winner. The contest was to enter, the contest simply, there was to take a picture, before and after a picture of the cleanup project and turn it in by middle day. I have, in the screen, you'll see the community cleanup flyer playing slate, the meeting location was cleanup at Jones Road, and the meeting was nine AM. What we had in place was, you were supposed to be there, go back to our communities, to our subdivisions, neighborhoods, and they were supposed to do a cleanup together as Woodstone residents came together, participated in the community cleanup contest, the before and after pictures of their parties were submitted, participants and winners were Sue Hodison, Iris and Danielle Aggar, and Carolyn Thomas, we're not, we're not related. As you can see, your pictures there, you have it as before and after pictures of their cleanup in their, in their community, they were the only issue that we received, they were submitted entry electronically, but we did get participation in the community center afterwards. As you can see right there in the community grill, in meeting, the participants ended back at the same location for our blogs on the grill, and discussed community issues that each neighborhood or subdivision is experiencing, and members of the Moro Police Department were also there present to speak to the residents regarding issues they had or concerns. So at this time, could the these three winners come up to be recognized properly?
Could, real quick, ladies and gentlemen, I don't have to read this, I know it from memory, these three ladies joined us at the North Ridge subdivision when we had the proud event of the wonderful Moro Police Department, they came and joined our Neighborhood Watch that day, that was Tuesday. At that meeting, Councilwoman Dean, who's also a member of Neighborhood Watch, was talking about the initiative that was pending that Saturday of the Earth Day Cleanup, wasting no time, these ladies sprung right into action, and went ahead and cleaned up their community, so not only were there efforts to be applauded, but their timeliness as well, they jumped in, so I think they deserve special.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, thank you.
Stand up in front of the door.
One, two, three.
No, thank you.
Sorry, get on one side, down on the other.
That's right, okay.
One, two, three, got it.
This was just the beginning of continuing effort to clean up our city, that was a kickoff because it was Earth Day, and it was appropriate for that to be the day to start cleaning up and beautifying our city. We want to start with the program we used to have, what is called neighbors helping neighbors, in your community, if you have elderly people, people that are disabled, that cannot, you know, cut their grass, cut their bushes, you know, just whatever, reach out and try and help, be a neighbor, and that way, you know, we can all help keep our city beautiful, clean it up, and make it look where we can be crowded.
Excuse me, folks, I am remiss, again, I might as well replace, I forgot to acknowledge two other members that are here, my vice president, Lana LaVey, and one of our block captains, Ms. Cherry Chris, could we ask, I'm sorry to make this real quick, the nominees of winners to come up one more time, as well as you folks, and take a more picture, please? I'm not going to talk about me at the next meeting. You know to call me if I respond to you.
Well, I see your email coming, you bring those reports off of them.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, y'all come first, Ms. Channing. We forgot someone, we forgot someone, I'd like to say thank you to our city clerk, Victor, he worked vigorously, he helped us bring it together, he did all of our shopping, hot
Remind everybody that Monday night, neighborhood watch.
Neighborhood watch, first Monday of the month, six thirty, in here, we'd love to see everybody back, and give us your comments, your solutions, we love your participation.
And I did want to, while we're talking about cleaning up your community, there is an initiative this Saturday across the county, cleaning Clayton's seven cities, there's some information available on Facebook, they still need volunteers, but it's across the seven cities of Clayton County, and the initiative was organized in part by someone from Riverdale, as well as our city clerk. city clerk, Miss Aguilar. And so we would like for as many people to volunteer and participate. This is going to be an ongoing effort to clean up the city. So there's another event this Saturday that we need volunteers for.
So you say we sign up on Facebook?
So there's a flyer. If you have an opportunity to print out some flyers and make them available?
Yeah, I printed out, or if those were interested, I can stay after a word saying I would have this, I can give you my card, so you can copy me.
Yes, yes.
Hello, Ms. Allen. I see you've got your family here today. Would you come up and bring your family in?
I think Catherine's outside. This is three, I think the fourth is out there.
But this is kind of a rare event from the standpoint of one of the longest-serving residents and certainly one of the longest businesses that the city's ever had, still operational. And this is a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Morrow, honoring Joanne Allen. Whereas Joanne Allen currently runs and owns Morrow Animal Hospital, known as the longest-running business of the city of Morrow. And whereas Joanne Allen has been living in the city of Morrow since 1954. And whereas Joanne Allen comes from a family of public servants, as her father served as the first police chief of the city of Morrow Police Department. And the city of Morrow is Joanne's home, and while she has watched the community go through many changes, it is still very dear to her. Joanne's passion is to serve, therefore she exhibits a deep level of care for the public safety employees of the city of Morrow, and more specifically, the Morrow Police Department. Joanne has embraced the members of the police department as her own family and looks after every officer as if it was their own children. I'm sure she would get on you for that. In fact, it can be argued that Joanne is the mother of all members of the Morrow Police Department. Joanne Allen has always answered the call of duty for the city of Morrow. She has served as the chairman of the Morrow Convention and Tourism Association, and the last remaining year as chairman this year. Therefore, I, John Lample II, mayor of the city of Morrow, join along with all members of the community in recognizing Joanne Allen for going above and beyond the call of duty for the city of Morrow. Bring them all up there. We look pretty good standing in front of the guys right there. The city council looks pretty good behind us as well.
Mr. Koch, you come up here with me, too.
And their youngest generation is out there. I don't remember that.
Out there, Dean, wow, he's 18 months.
Eighteen months.
Yeah, you're in, too.
I worked. Put your weight in it, though.
This is our new year. That my daddy was instrumental in hiring him sheriff's department in 1982. So there's a lot of history here.
One more picture.
He don't want to come.
Okay. All right, we good?
Appreciate it, everyone.
New business. Approval of Morrow Police Department recognition for the purchase of a budget replacement unmarked registered vehicle 2023 for extradition. And to opt for the brand execute any agreement related documents that leave that vehicle in possession as well as that. Do I hear a motion to approve? No, here's a second. All those in favor say aye.
We did not have a chance to have a discussion about this during the vote session. We open this to discussion.
Sure.
So in the agenda, listed as a good business to say this project, then also the agenda package as provided to the council. Then there is a memo, and in the bottom, that memo to say it had the boxes, checkbox, and say this is not project, it's not under squad, it's not sold. My question is that, is it certain whether it's under the project or it's not project?
I think it's a checkbox here. I'm going to take it based on face value of what they write. I think you got a budget, and I know they have a number of items that actually purchasing a police department or any of those. Anybody disagree with that?
So is this vertical or is not vertical?
You haven't said it, folks.
Vertical, I think.
It's not squad, though.
So it's vertical, so?
We'd have to give a squad here for it to be.
So see, the manager, could you please get the memo prepared for the council record? That is vertical, but it's not under squad?
Okay.
Thank you. And then also it say the fiscal impact is listed here, fifty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. So how did we come up with this number? How we run, have the car dealer provided us a code for us to have the idea how much car going to be, or what car we have tried to get?
All vehicles, all vehicles that we buy, we buy off of state contract. State contract is already a pretty good budget item that's been done through the state authority, whether you're buying a pickup truck, or you buy a motor vehicle, or you buy a car, anyways, it depends on what's on. So as long as you got a replacement vehicle that fits the requirements of what they're looking for, the beauty of it is you just simply pick, and then for there, it's going to take where it came from. But leave all this, it's a pretty good process, the state authority.
I understood about the state approved contractor. I might be asking that there is an amount, the value of the car that we spending, it doesn't specific number here, fifty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. So do we have backup information? Have you come up with that?
I imagine it's the invoice that came from the car dealership. Looks like you bought something, it could be another.
Okay, good, good. So the banker, could I get a copy of the invoice at the meeting? I know that you don't have a computer, but I would like to have that for the record of this package. Is that good? Thank you. And also, we have passing the police report for a long time. We used to have the police report, fire department, we still have daily reports, but the report that we used to see from the police department, it also had some information about the tier which served, car information. Could we get it going, or we have before? Because we brought the law on that.
Are you talking about the data report?
Yes.
You get one every day.
Oh, okay. So could you please forward?
Just look in your folder, I can help you find the folder. It's on your email.
Oh, okay, that will be good. And last question. I know this is vehicle for police department, and say stated in the memo saying that it's in a critical failing point. So what served in this vehicle going to, what served is this car using?
It's basically part of the fleet.
Okay. And I also ask for a fleet report. Could I have it?
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'm asking a question. I asked for a fleet report. Could I have it?
I don't see a reason I can't.
Thank you. Thank you. And I also going to work with me just to see the police report lately. I appreciate that.
Other comments? You got a motion, you got a property second, all those in favor say aye. Ms. Tran? Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Approval of the city manager's request for the city of Morrow to commit to requirements that began in Purple Heart City. This is to encourage the show of appreciation for the sacrifices of the Purple Heart residents who have made the defending our communities and who are not as they're courage and show their honor and support their man. And for the mayor, if you get any agreements and documents that are stated in the word section, do I hear a motion to approve?
Still.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Much property second, all those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean? Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Ordinance is the resolution, the city of Morrow recommends the door city in 2023 to 29, and very much to support. Do I hear a motion to approve? Who actually held the event already, but it's going to be proclamation, very motion to approve. Very second. Much property second, all those in favor say aye. Ms. Nate?
Aye.
Ms. Dean? Ms. Qua?
Aye.
And Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Much appears. Last one, the resolution to set the candidacy requirements for the day of office, two members of the council plus the mayor's after office, and to appoint qualifying officers. In this case, the qualifying officer is going to be the current city clerk. And I believe this process is getting published in the newspaper, and the qualifying fees are here on forty-five dollars and sixty cents for the office council member, five hundred and eighteen dollars and forty cents for the office of mayor. Qualifying, maybe thirty-two, one for thirty, as required by the law, and that's the candidacy. Do I hear a motion to approve?
From?
Very second, much property second, all those in favor say aye.
Mayor, we did not have a chance to have a discussion regarding this matter during the vote session. Could you please open discussion?
Sure.
Thank you. So the Morrow community is a robust community that have a high percentage of Hispanic and Asian. So, and a lot of the voters have language barrier. So I am seeing that if we, if we have a bilingual ballot, that would help the voter familiar with easier to, easier to process during the time they're casting their vote. So I am supporting the idea to have the bilingual language in Hispanic and Vietnamese. And of course, this will be the process to work with the county, we hired the county to run the election, then?
The county will run the election.
Yeah, so then we will?
Georgia has election laws, right? They're very specific, okay? So the city of Morrow took this stage years ago to basically pay for interpreters to be available at our elections. Anybody who needed it. You can still bring anyone you want, and that's basically required by federal law. However, all of your elections and all of the materials of your elections are required to be done in English. That's state law. So we will follow the laws that are out there. We have the ability to be able to provide the interpreters. The interpreters, in some counties, if you have a population of a certain, you know, diverse population that speaks a certain language, then you're actually required by law to provide interpreters. And in this case, we don't need those departments, even if we have candidates, we don't need those departments based on this population. So we have taken a step to be very inclusive, to make it so that if somebody does, you know, want to come in, they do that. However, your interpreter doesn't get to basically have a conversation with people. Their basic input is interpreted about. So let's say you're about, and you use me as an example, you know, John Lample, my name isn't going to really change a lot regardless of what language we have in there. In America, we read a couple different ways, so it's not complex in terms of that. If you manage to figure out how to get to the voting booth, I think you're going to do reasonably well. So most of your interpretations would be something that we just did recently, which is where, you know, we asked the citizens and we went through the state legislation to be able to ask for an increase in your home state exemption. And by either passing that or denying that, it would have said, you are personally property tax through your house, right? Now that would have been a paragraph. That paragraph might require that somebody do interpret that or something along those lines. We have none of that that's going to be up on this particular election cycle. It'll be simple names. I promise there'll be enough yards signs out there to kind of pick and choose who we have. So no one's trying to put out a law here. We will make available, as a city captain, as a state interpreter is available to you. But the Georgia laws will be followed, right? That's set up through the state's office, and those are going to require in English as required.
I see the way that we follow the law, we respect the law. I appreciate that. Understanding that having the voter could bring in the voters to help. And I myself, in the past several elections, didn't have some of the voters to cast a vote, even though with us experiencing doing that, I saw that people still struggle with that when they look at the language, when they would don't communicate that well with them. Having an assistant would be easier than having one that all, but have someone who can read their own language, their own, can read information with their own, they would be more comfortable with that. And we're talking about following the law. We may have a lower percentage of Asian, and they have bilingual ballot. So I don't think, we may could be violating the state law. So I'm supporting the idea to have bilingual language ballot to ease the challenge for the voters.
Any other comments?
Mayor, may I make a remark regarding having ballots bilingual? Not only will we have to have people at the county level to be able to read their language, so you have to, that causes a whole new process of voting. It's not just for the city. It'll be, you know, whoever's counting the votes, looking at the votes, however the votes are counted, the person will have to be able to read that ballot.
As admirable an idea as the state law, it's not going to be changed. It's durable. The ballots will be written in English, I promise. Other comments? Here, now, go back to the original motion. We have a property second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Tran? Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
And Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Much appears. We're going to, we'll go to comments, and then right after the comments, we'll go into executive section, go to the new idea, go exactly to the legal discussion, but I don't know how long it's going to take. So the comments for the others. Mr. Wayne Collins?
I just want to thank the mayor and councilor for moving, and the city manager for his due diligence, and for us moving forward to designating our great city of Purple Heart City. Thank you.
Other comments?
My question, following him, what does it mean that Morrow is a Purple Heart City?
In the actual application, still, there's an explanation as to what that does, and we can make that available, or it's available in the section. Bring it up on the comments.
Thank you.
So, and it's cool stuff. You know, these folks got hurt, and in some cases, they didn't make that, you know, solution to do. Other comments?
I just wanted to, I'm going to say thank you to the policemen and to the firefighters. We had a meeting, an economy meeting in Norwich last week, and they were available, and some of it, then they cook up knocks and things like that, make themselves available so we can comment our concerns that we have in our community. And it makes, it makes us feel really, really good to know that we have them there for us. So, very nice, thank you.
Thank you. Very few would probably think about, you know, when you demand determines, you know, how much somebody wants something, right? If you have eighteen hundred homes in the city, and let's just do single family details for just a minute, out of eighteen hundred, how many of you think are on Georgia on the list today, right now? Or if I told you two? And of the two, one is way overpriced, a car drive. And the second one's properly priced, but the value on the interior hasn't been updated to meet the value. priced, but the value on the interior hasn't been updated beneath the bat, just because your neighbor's house sells for something, doesn't mean that she kept up yours quite to that low, and how hard to find, you can find it on here, when you do the zip code, that typically goes into Lake City, goes into unincorporated areas, but something like that, I literally look at it and go, inside the city, outside the city, or otherwise, for my friends over in the associations, Northridge only has one, yeah, it's got some tacky red carpet on the floor, so it's not yours, but that kind of makes that a little bit complicated, and Woodston has set some amazing records, you have one listed right now, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, there's another one at one fifty-something, I think the lowest is like at one twenty-five, you know, that is a remarkable recovery from somewhere Woodston was at.
We were at ten thousand, or one time, eight, two thousand, eight hundred.
But you've now created a demand that is being set, and the only way you can set something, of course, is somebody's got it, and that is making some remarkable progress, so very, Morrow's very popular today.
Thank you, thank you.
Other comments? Okay, comments from the city council, Ms. Chan?
Just wanted to say thank you, the students aren't here, but thank you for their participation, it was a pretty cool contest, as always, thank you to those who always assist the city to kind of carry things forward, from our public service folks, to just those dedicated and loyal citizens that love the city, we appreciate you ladies, you are charged with bringing a friend to the next council meeting, we, yes, the Neighborhood Watch, it's moments like this where we really want to engage the citizens to understand, you know, you are vested in this, we sit up here, we're just neighbors, we're just neighbors who decided to answer the call, and help to lead a vision for the city, but we need more folks to participate, so you are charged with bringing more people, and just thank you all for, I see you, city.
We try.
Yes, our young citizens and homeowners, I see you, yeah, so we just invite you all to come back, continue to be engaged, we need you.
Thanks, thank you.
Ms. Qua?
I have to say, thank you to all the participation for my building program, and through the busy, busy city, and just that we, we are all, you know, many generous children, and getting involved, the city is coming again, thank you.
Ms. Dean?
If I start talking, I'll need some tissue, you ladies, you made us proud, it was called instantly, you all came, you heard, and you did something, thank you, thank you, thank you.
We're not done.
Many, many more days, thank you, and also to Police Department for having the proud meetings, first of all, if you didn't have that meeting at Northridge, you ladies wouldn't have known about it, and so, the program is helping each other, it's neighbors helping neighbors, so through the proud program, you're bringing in people from all communities to hear what we're, get the message, and understand what it is that we're trying to do, and my other son here, that I bring sometimes, he's been diligent, helping so much, he's been shopping, and I'll teach him how to be a good shopper, he's doing very well, but Lieutenant Bieber, Pedro, my buddy, Draxler, who are every year, thank you so much, you know, you're what we call Morrow's finest, you're always there for us, and we appreciate what you do in the neighborhood, our fire department as well, so, and to our winners of the wonderful contest, I mean, we should put those up at the art gallery, we might be able to get some recognition for those photos that they did, they were awesome, and we need to do more like this, you know, things like this to bring our communities together, we can continue to engage in different activities, programs, so that we can, you know, know who our neighbors are, so thank you all, thank you.
If I might briefly try to, if you would, make copies, those who want to participate next Saturday, please have the grant, and Mr. Aguilar will provide some flyers.
I watch him send it via email.
Okay.
They're not only about clothes, they're not.
Ms. Tran?
Aye. Brad?
At the Presbyterian Church.
Proud meeting?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday?
This is coming Thursday.
Presbyterian Church?
Northlea Street.
Northlea Street.
Six p.m.
Six p.m.
I'm sorry, next Thursday, not this Thursday.
No, this Thursday.
Oh, yeah, this Thursday. I was calling your D.
This Thursday.
Well, thanks a lot, thank you, the Ray County, to help us to recognize, put the Purple Heart, to recognize the people, and honor the people who sacrificed for what we have here, and then I do appreciate the community involvement, inclusive, whether it's a fun contest, or it is a project, a small project, that helps you get the history, but they make the city nicer and cleaner, and I'm looking forward to see more participants from everyone, thank you.
And just to show you how diverse the community is, on May fourth, we're gonna have our Star Wars event, and we're inviting our intergalactic friends down here and enjoy themselves in Morrow, so if you think of us as a little bit of aliens, we won't be having some friends out here that'll dress the part, so, come out, enjoy yourself, it should be the time to be at the district, they get ready from five to nine, we will have the original Star Wars movie playing on one end of the digital screen, nice one, and the DJ will start from five to seven, and we're gonna swap the DJ from the ice stage, kicking down into the street by the bridge, and let him do a street party for those of us who have seen Star Wars many, many times, if you have sort of, you know, but either way, the little battle of the bands, instead of having two piano, something besides, it's gonna be some fun, and there'll be a number of food trucks that are out there, we'll have it listed shortly, they're actually fairly good, and then we have a couple small shops, Simone Rose, a couple places, so come out, enjoy yourself, that being said, we will, do I hear a motion, go to the executive session? Very second, most probably second, all those in favor say aye, all those in favor.
See y'all Thursday.